Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Time is 7:11. This meeting of the Eastlime Planning Commission is now in order. I'd like to seat, seeing as Ernie Covina's not here. I think I'll ask Anthurlo to sit in and take Ernie's spot for us. And we can stay standing and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Black and to the United States of America. To the Republic, which is fair, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
First order of business is public delegations. Does anybody here this evening speak to the commission? Going twice. That brings us to our approval of minutes. In your packets, you'll find the 15 September public hearing minutes and the 15 September regular hearing minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the public hearing minutes. Joan has moved. Rita has seconded. Is there further discussion or any amendments to the public hearing minutes?
I would just note that, I believe it was your note, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that you felt that the state architect review was irrelevant. I think you might have said irrelevant.
Right, right. Thank you.
Only he could pick that up. He's very good.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay. Five, zero, one. Next item of business is the 15 September regular hearing minute, meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Rita has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bangston. Is there further discussion? Any adjustments to the language? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Five, zero, one. We have no subdivisions and re-subdivisions. That brings us to our zoning referrals. Proposed changes in zoning regulations or boundaries shall be referred to the Planning Commission for a report that shall contain the findings of the Planning Commission on consistency of a proposed regulation or boundaries changed with the plan of development and any other recommendations the Planning Commission deems relevant. Failure of the Planning Commission to report prior to or at the hearing shall be taken as an approval of such proposals. The report of the Planning Commission regarding such proposals shall include the reasons for the Commission's vote and shall be incorporated into the records of any public hearing held thereon by the zoning commission. A proposal disapproved by the Planning Commission may be adopted by the zoning commission by a vote of not less than two-thirds of all members of the zoning commission. Tonight, we're picking up the application of Theodore A. Harris for GDEL Residential B LLC, application for a text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations, section 11, Alpha 922 Charlie, to increase the number of units from 280 to 400. Mr. Geisholz has submitted a series of exhibits that we all have loose leaf and stapled in front of us now. In order to start our deliberations, Mr. Geisholz, could you provide us with a summary of what we have at our fingertips here?
Sure. If you want, we can index them just for clarity.
That'd be great.
Why don't we start with the March 6, 2007 letter from the Planning Commission to Chairman Schwartz. Yes. That was just a referral. Essentially, what this is just showing is that the initial proposed regulation for the Gateway Development District did not limit the number of residential units or in order to specify how many was proposed. We call that one. I'll move to the May 17, 2007 letter from Ms. Schwartz to Mark Nickerson regarding the application of Theodore Harris for Gateway Development whereby the Planning Commission found the referral consistent with the plan of development. In addition, it copied excerpts from the plan of development at that time with that letter was attached. Exhibit two. Exhibit three, we'll use the January 16, 2008 letter from Francine Schwartz to Mr. Mark Nickerson, again where the Planning Commission found the referral consistent with the POCD. And again, attached are the commercial land use recommendations for the proposed referral. Also includes some excerpts from the Yale Charrette. Go to, with those three, I'd like to, there's a case here, if I pronounce this right, Roche or Rocky versus Zoning Board of Appeals, the town of Glastonbury, from Westlaw. I think the exhibit four. Background explanation as to the relevance of that. So, this is a, I guess, this is just one of several similar cases whereby it creates a body of law, if you will, where the commission can't necessarily change its mind after having made a decision unless there's a significant change in circumstances. And then you also have a undated, I guess, memo regarding the Gateway history. Call that, did you plug?
Is that this one?
Yeah, different color.
It's the timeline. And then we also have a Gateway School Impact Actual Demographics to date.
The Gateway School Impact exhibit is not signed or there's no letterhead. Who provided that?
That was provided by Ted Harris at my request for clarification on the numbers that's currently being occupied.
And what date was that?
That was handed to me today.
And when was the data collected?
I think it's as of today, is my understanding, till they put forward.
At the comma, that strikes me off that the town doesn't have that data available to the town across town channels. I mean, there's the databases with children's addresses. What did he source this from?
That, again, I don't know specifically. I think just from their records, or maybe he contacted the school. The property manager? I don't know, the property manager.
I hear you, Frank. I agree with you. Look at the granularity they have. Eastlime residents who sold a home but remained in Eastlime so the children could finish school. Seven people, I mean, that's a pretty personal detail. They know where people moved from. So, they must have pretty good records.
Well, perhaps this is a survey that is conducted of residents? I don't know.
I would suspect, I mean, that they contacted the school district, but again, I would have to confirm that.
It's just an unusual format for a document from Attorney Harris compared to every other document that is on letterhead and cites specific references and details of the facts that are stated to be facts.
I think that's a good point, Frank. Yeah, actual demographics to date with no date. So, Mr. Geisholz, have we gone through tagging all these exhibits?
Yes, I mean, for now, yeah. I'm not going to add anything additional. So, as you know, we had some discussion at the last meeting. I did receive some comments from individual commissioners, and I guess maybe I can run through some of that. I did manage to obtain some answers.
Make sure you're getting in the mic.
I did manage to get some answers on some of those questions. One being was how many acres of forested land will be cleared to facilitate construction of the proposed additional 120 residential units? The answer was approximately less than six. The next question was whether or not the town could put constraints in place to limit the apartments to one and two-bedroom units. The answer to that is that it is a, that would be a zoning issue, but yes, the zoning commission could limit the number of bedrooms per unit as part of their approval or even with, as part of the reg. And that would be a zoning, the zoning officer's requirement to enforce if that was the case. One question was whether the development was, the developer was able to market them as three-bedroom units. I know that, we discussed that briefly at the end of the last meeting. The answer that I received was that it was yes, that they had always intended three-bedroom units and they had proposed that, and there was nowhere in the regulation that was proposed limiting the number of bedrooms per unit.
Can I make a comment on that, Gary?
Sure.
How come there was quite a bit of discussion on the units and the number of units being two to three-bedroom and what they were called, and it was adamant? I went to the Gateway opening, cutting ceremony, and at first, yes, they did say three-bedrooms, and then they cut that down and they said, no, 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 it's really two bedrooms in a den. For what reason they're doing is I have no idea. As I said, if you are from any real estate knowledge, a bedroom is a window and a closet, a built closet.
The answer that I got was that it, whether you call it a three-bedroom or two-bedrooms in a den, it was whatever was convenient for the purposes of marketing.
But, the difference being, if you market it as a three-bedroom, you will get more money dollar-wise than you would market it as two-bedrooms in a den. Dollar value.
Right.
So, that's why they, it's on their plan as three-bedrooms. That's the difference in the monies. Want to change now, I don't know.
So, as it pertains to that question, just, so, of the units of the 280 that are approved, here's the breakdown of those. Twenty of those units are studios, that represents seven percent. Eighty-one are one-bedrooms, representing 29 percent. A hundred and forty-two are two-bedrooms, representing 50 percent, and there are 42 three-bedroom units, representing 14 percent. Next question that was, I was asked was, what was the equivalent prorated tax assessment of each of the currently existing various sized apartments to the town? So, my understanding is that the assessor doesn't break out necessarily, but I did have correspondence. Let me get that. So, she doesn't break out per, the tax assessment, if it was a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, but rather the whole building as a whole. And I can start with, per, I guess, per building. Buildings two, three, four, five, six, seven, and 10 are assessed at 1.992, 1,992,200 each. Buildings eight, nine, 11, 12, 13, and 14 have an assessment of zero. However, once they inspect the buildings within the next week or so, they will be assessed accordingly. That was correspondence from Donna Beckett today. As it relates to that item, I guess the total, from Mr. McCulloch, I asked if he could tell me what the Gateway pays in taxes per building, including the clubhouse. Well, that was answered by Ms. Beckett, that the clubhouse assessment is 494,0690. So, I should have put that in context. So, the total tax on Maple Tree Lane is 140,0619 under the GDEL Residential LLC currently. what the developer indicated to me was that roughly 2.3 million would be the assessed value of all the units combined.
Is that the 280 approved right now, or is that the anticipated potential 400?
No, that, that's the
Two eighty.
Two eighty. So, each, if you add it all up on all 10, sorry, 14 buildings, one, two, three, yeah, all 13 buildings plus the clubhouse, it'll be somewhere around 2.3 million.
Which, based on our mil rate, generates what revenue to the town?
It's about, well...
You got a mil rate number?
It's 25 percent, 24? Yeah.
And then I wanted to ask Roseanne Hardy, one of the discussions I was having with the town planner was about the cost per student in Eastlime. And I was able to print out an advert, a newspaper article that talked about Eastlime as like one of the top 10 towns. They cited a, that Eastlime spends the most per student in the state, and the number that they assigned that we spend on each student is $18,000 a year.
I looked at it, I don't know what you mean by that now.
Yeah.
It's definitely not that high. I don't know the exact figure, but I don't know where 18,000 came from. Unless they did an average, if a child is coming in that has special needs, then that's a different rate than a child that doesn't need special programming. So, perhaps they divided the two figures that came up with 18,000. But, the fact is that in our area of comparative schools, it's called the Derg, D-R-G, which is how they compare schools that are in our, not necessarily our geographic area, but our economic area. And we are consistently the lowest, we're next to the lowest in funding. So, I would definitely question this, but I can verify this easily. We'll call tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And I had Mr. Geisholz, because we both were also surprised that the number was as high as it was, and we print, we followed the reporter's link to his data. So, we actually have, and maybe, could you drop one off with Roseanne?
Sure.
We have the whole spreadsheet that the reporter used. It's got
Every town in Connecticut.
Every town in Connecticut with a whole spreadsheet of data. So, we were both impressed that it looked like it had been, it was good research, but I'd be interested to hear what kind of numbers our own Board of Ed is using.
Where is the source of this?
We can give you the handout. And it had a byline with the reporter. Do you want, do you mind just handing her that big thing?
Yeah, can you, I don't, I don't
I can wait till you
Okay.
So, it's not
The spreadsheet's not sourced, so.
Okay.
I'd have to look. So, I guess in terms of, the question was what kind of revenue, it's roughly $50,000 a building, which is approximately $650,000.
And that's rough enough. I mean, Attorney Harris stated 500,000, so if you do the, he said a half a million a year just on the building, so give him 600,000 a year as an income, and divide that by the 280 units, and I think we're coming up with 2,200 rounded up, and that's not going to stretch to even cover 10,000 per student, if you had one kid per unit. But that's, you know, that's where this is going with the whole three-bedroom thing, at least in my opinion, does the, does the entire district initiative as originally envisioned. I mean, they, the town puts some conscious effort into restraining this development to 280 from the original request of 400. And it sure sounds like there are enough indications in the trail that that was because it was realized that even with a, I don't know what ratio you want to pick as a guess, if every three-bedroom has one kid in the school system, you could start with that. But when you, when you, and that would be a low estimate in itself. Eventually, the curves cross, and what you're gaining from a, the commercial development that may someday happen is potentially completely eroded by the cost of services in educating the children. I think we all get that, but expressing it is the difficult part, and the rough math where you're getting 2,200 per unit, and some percentage of those school-aged children, if it's just 17, I don't know, 17 times 10 grand becomes 170 real fast. I dare say that although these numbers, you can say, I don't know that they're factual or adequate projection of what the town would be facing. So, that's, that's what this is all about.
I will reference a document in terms of, because, you know, to follow that question, what was the answer, or answer the question, the average expenditure per student, the fiscal and economic impact of the proposed development, which was done by Turner Miller Group, prepared for the developer.
What year?
I'm going to cite that.
This, Frank, this might be perfect.
So, this document, this report came out in March 2008, and the report utilizes the amended 2007, 2008 budget as a basis for calculating per capita cost. Student cost is based on the 2006, 2007 school budget amount of $10,903 per school child, of which 70.6 percent is raised locally, as reported by the Connecticut Department of Education in its strategic profile for the Eastlime School District. So, I guess to put that into perspective, what it's costing us as a town, and that was in 2006, 2007.
Was that the report that contains the summary of, which was kind of, kind of sums it all up for us?
So, further down, it goes through the net impacts of various development scenarios, sensitivity analysis, as it's called. And it's a, basically used to calculate the impacts of various development proposals. And the idea was demonstrating whether or not a departure from the applicant's development proposal could result in drastically changed conclusions on fiscal impact. So, they evaluate the three-bedroom, two-bedroom apartment, total units. Scenario one was the developer's proposal, which if it were in place and occupied today, that being 2008, town of Eastlime would have experienced a net increase in revenue of 1.7 million. It is notable that the residential element of the project results in a net negative impact. Scenario two, which was a 50 percent reduction in commercial floor area, because of the economies of scale and the net negative impact of residential development, the project impact is more sensitive to decrease in commercial area. If the project were constructed with approximately half the proposed commercial floor area, but with all the proposed residential units, the net impact would be approximately 44.4 percent of the full proposal. And it goes through a 50 percent reduction in commercial floor area, a 25 percent commercial development with mild departure from the residential program, as well as scenario five. This was the no three-bedroom unit, which indicates that the last scenario shows what would happen if the three-bedroom units are eliminated altogether. There would be a modest increase in the fiscal net benefit under this scenario. The net residential fiscal deficit is almost eliminated. The net difference in total development impact is nominal due to the significance of the commercial revenue.
Well, that's the part I wanted to drill down on. Now, is that only in this, if they eliminate the three-bedrooms, or that last sentence that you just said?
Yeah, if the last scenario shows what would happen if the three-bedroom units are eliminated altogether. They only had one and two-bedroom units.
And what is the conclusion? If there's only one and two-bedroom units?
If the three-bedroom units were eliminated from the development proposal, there would be a modest increase in the fiscal net benefit.
Okay. What was the part that we were discussing earlier on the phone about the, there's a reference to commercial being the, tipping the balance towards it being
Well, yeah, that was, that might have been
Because I'd like, if possible, I'd like to use the Economic Impact Report that they filed in 2008, and try to, you know, if we can find language in that, that's helpful. I think there'd be, that trumps us trying to do our own research. They've got to, they were tracking these very issues, right? Trade-offs between tax revenue versus cost.
Yeah, and I think that's what we were discussing, was that, you know, eliminating that potential to that third bedroom is kind of significant in terms of impact. But, you know, that's also assuming
Did you read something right at the beginning too, that said if the residential is a net cost? What was that?
Just give me another minute here. Didn't I, didn't I read it for Beta Meta here, Brian?
I thought that was what you, the source you had mentioned.
Some words that say that in the residential multifamily portion of the zoning of the POCD, and that, I don't know if Mr. Geisholz has read it, but, and it's stated as a concern, it's not stated as a fact.
What we were talking about was a specific comment in the, in the document which said that the cost to the town would be nominal due to the commercial revenue. And I thought they put it in a nice And I thought they put it in a nice, yeah, I was talking to Mr. Geishaw over the phone, and I wanted to try to track down that, that phrase so that the commission could chew on it for a moment, because I think it's a, it addresses the whole constellation issues about, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here, infrastructure, cost of the schools, that we don't necessarily have the best information on. This economic impact analysis sought to answer those questions.
Maybe, maybe it was in the assumption that here, that the, what I did tab was that the zoning amendment, now this was back in two thousand eight at that time, if approved would permit the development envisioned in the presentation of materials submitted to the commission, but would not ensure that this level type of development occurs. And that's referencing some prior notes. But, the last sentence in this paragraph said, for the purpose of this analysis, we are assuming that the retail development would occur as presented. The size, scope, and nature of the proposed development suggest a regional market orientation. And their, this analysis is based on that assumption. And the other tab area.
I might suggest if there was a PDF of that on the machine, you might just be able to scan the document with Ctrl F and look for that word nominal, because I'm pretty sure that was a key word, and it would jump up.
I would love to do that, but I gotta scan it.
Oh, okay, okay. First, our intern. Okay, so while Mr. Geishaw's looking that up, let's open up the discussion, and I'd like to hear from each of the commission members on what their concerns are. Again, this is all about crafting a motion that will be sent to zoning that will help them make their decisions. So, they are asking for our
Input?
Input, but specifically our expertise on the plan of conservation and development. If it's in the, it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development, we can craft a motion towards that if we want. If we find specific things that are inconsistent, we need to, we need to note them. So, maybe we could start the brainstorming of aspects of this text amendment, either consistent or inconsistent, and see if we can start to develop the motion.
Before we have any kind of discussion of that, I have a question.
Sure.
Why are we, the commission, having a, it seems to be a hard time trying to figure out what we need to do when, I've gone back quite a number of years to know that we actually did, meaning we, the zoning board and the planning commission, had agreed that this complex was going to be.